Welcome. We'll call our meeting in order. Happy New Year. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask everybody if you'll indulge me after we do the pledge before we sit back down if we do a moment of silence for former President Carter and his family. But we'll start with the pledge.
All right. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So yeah, if you'll please remain standing. I was just a teenager when President Carter was the president. And I've grown to learn a lot about him and his family over the years, much more than I ever cared about when I was a teenager. But it struck me in our country and our communities all across our country today, how much in dire need we are of people who care about their community and are willing to put their time and effort and their energy into volunteering to giving back to their communities. And the president and his wife are absolutely beacons in that regard and a great example to us all. So if you'll join me in a brief moment of silence to recognize them and their service to our country, I'd be grateful. Okay, thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our December 2, 2024.
Move that we approve the minute for the regular meeting at December 2?
Second.
Any questions, comments, suggested revisions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on our agenda is the appointments. We're pretty close. We have a number of reappointments to make. I talked to Peggy about it and to Scott. I think we will hold those off for a couple of weeks to make sure we got all the lists exactly right. And we'll make those appointments and reappointments at our next meeting. That's okay with everybody?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, no old business, so we'll move right into new business. And the first item on the agenda is to issue a proclamation to Mackenzie Jansky. So this is one of our favorite things to do. We start by reading the proclamation. It's not one of my strengths, by the way, reading it aloud. It's not one of my strengths. I apologize if I stutter. And then Mackenzie will have you come up and then we'll have the family. Let me read the proclamation first. Surely remind me to pause so I get the picture you want. All right. So the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, commonly referred to as Girl Scouts, is a youth organization for girls in the United States and American girls living abroad, and was founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912. And whereas the stated mission of the Girl Scouts is to instill courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place through activities involving camping, community service, and practical skills such as first aid. And whereas Granby resident and recent high school graduate Mackenzie Jansky, a longtime and dedicated member of the Girl Scouts Salmon Brook Service Unit, recognized an increase in anxiety and depression in teens and decided to do something about it. And whereas, as part of her Gold Award project, the highest award a Girl Scout can receive, Mackenzie created a website to inform teens about these issues, including signs and symptoms, to look for invaluable information about local and national mental health resources available to them. In addition, Mackenzie created mindfulness kits, which were assembled and distributed at several locations in town. And whereas the town of Granby wishes to recognize Mackenzie for her years of dedication and hard work, both as a Girl Scout and a Granby resident, whose caring and compassion has benefited all Granby residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Fiorentino, by the powers vested in me as first selectman, which are very few, by the way, but this is my favorite, do hereby proclaim Mackenzie Jansky be recognized by all residents of Granby as a distinguished citizen deserving full praise for her accomplishments in scouting and in life. And a witness there, blah, blah, blah. Sorry. I don't actually normally do this, so I should have warned you that I was going to do this. After we take your picture, before we get your family to come up, will you be willing to tell us a little bit more about the program that you're doing this for?
[laughing]
Wait. There's one of the two of us. All right.
Now, everybody.
All right, now everybody.
You can stay there.
They're all trained so well.
Just right.
A little closer here.
Yep.
All righty. One, two, three. Okay.
Now, if you're going to take back what I said, we're going to have you take your pictures with your family and then I'll ask you to take them.
Careful.
The wallpaper.
I think they call those photobombs.
So Mackenzie, come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about what the website you created.
So the website is called The Hope Hangout, and I created it. So it has three different pages. One is about anxiety specifically. One is about depression. I have another page dedicated to an infographic that is like a kind of a mental health temperature check to see how you're feeling and what you can do to help yourself feel better. And then I have a page dedicated to resources, both around Granby and on the national level. So I included like the Youth Services Bureau for Granby resources. And each page has a couple, some symptoms that could present themselves, both kind of obvious and that you wouldn't quite think of related to anxiety or depression. It has some quotes that help make you feel less alone with what you're feeling, and some small things that you can do to help, like in the moment, helps stop gaps to feel better and then so that you can then find professional help afterwards. So it's meant to provide kind of stopgap information between realizing this is something you might be struggling with and the point where you are reaching out for professional help to cope with and learn to deal with that.
Well, that's awesome. Did you do any advertising for it? Like, so how do people know that it's a resource forum?
I created posters that were hung up in the center of town, the middle and high school, the Granby YMCA. And I created, or I wrote an ad in the Drummer that was posted a month after I finished my project. I also posted on my own social media accounts about my project.
Wow, that's awesome.
That's great.
Thank you very much. That's really important. So I hope I'm not overstepping my bounds, but the family invited me. Mackenzie is being awarded a Gold Star. Is that saying it right for the Girl Scouts?
Yeah.
And so on Sunday at 2 o'clock at the Pilgrim Church. So I'm pleased to be able to go and will go. Can I invite the rest of the board to go? All right, I just invited you all to go. 2 o'clock on Sunday if you can make it at the church, the Pilgrim Church. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda, you actually might be interested in this little tiny bit, Mackenzie. It's not directly related to what you did, but a little bit. So the next item on our agenda is to consider the Community Law Enforcement Addiction Recovery Program, also known as CLEAR. Take it away, Mike.
So I don't want to take a lot of the thunder away from both Sandy Ost or Chief Sansom, but basically, the Sackler family, for many years, produced opioids for the country. It was found after several years that what they did was not in the best interest of the community, and that's to put it mildly, the communities across the United States. As a result, a varying amount of attorney generals from nearly all 50 states sued them. And in Connecticut, there will be $600 million of settlement funds coming to the state of Connecticut over the next 20 years. In Granby, we receive approximately $30,000 a year, and we currently have $72,000 in the bank. From my past life, we entered into an agreement similar to the CLEAR program, and again, I will defer to the chief and Sandy to talk about this. But not every call needs an officer, a gun, a taser, and a badge. Oftentimes, there's mental health or substance abuse going on. There's a variety of other things that the opioids or whatever the addiction is happens to be covering up. If there is a warm handoff to a social worker or somebody that can connect these individuals, the outcomes, connect the individuals to services, the outcomes generally are better. So this is a problem across every community in the United States. There is funding, and we will take the funding which heretofore has not been programmed. In my recommendation, and you'll hear from Sandy, you'll hear from the chief, as to why this is important. It addresses their workload. It addresses it in a professional and sincere way. And I do believe that the end result will be better outcomes. So I'll turn it over to Sandy. I'll turn it over to the chief, and they can give us a little bit more information, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. I'd only ask that you either come to that mic or this one, so I don't hear it from Mark in the back.
So when the opioid settlement funds started to roll in, we were charged with, what are we going to do with these funds? We didn't want to jump in right away and come up with something that wasn't going to be meaningful. While we do have substantial funds that are coming in, and they will continue to roll in over time, we started meeting with the other directors, the social services directors from the Farmington Valley. We decided collectively we would get more bang for our buck if we worked together collectively and pooled our funds and worked together to do a more regional approach. So we were able to identify the CLEAR program, which has been established in Connecticut. There's a two, no, three communities that are already utilizing the CLEAR program, and they're getting some really great results. The whole point of the program is to combine law enforcement, who are the first people to respond on many of these cases, and combine it with, like Mike said, some professional in the industry who can understand and help guide the, both the victim, not the victim, the individual and their family. So that's the nice piece about it. It is a total wraparound service. As Mike indicated, sometimes it's not just a, it's not really a police issue. It can develop into that, but it's because you've got somebody who is suffering from an addiction. So giving them the support services through professional means is probably the best way to go about it. So it is that warm handoff as Mike suggested.
Yeah, so in a nutshell, why we put all our heads together and use the Farmington Valley Health District is because the money that comes in alone wasn't really stuff, because there's certain parameters that this money could be used for, to combat what had happened as a result of the drug company over prescribing this drug and coming out with this drug. So it's very limited, and it wouldn't give us enough money to really give us capacity to do anything. So as a collective in the Farmington Valley, by putting all the money together, we will now be more effective. So what we're planning on doing is, as we get this money, we identified the CLEAR program, which is already up and running in the Litchfield County area, and it's working. So we would get established, how the system would work is, we would go, so currently what happens now is, we go to someone that's in crisis. Police officer will get there. They'll usually perform lifesaving measures through Narcan. The ambulance is usually right there with us, get them shipped to the hospital to keep them alive. Well, not only does the person that has the addiction issue get help from someone that we can call to respond out, it's also for the family. Because we help out a little bit now, but we really don't have the capacity or are we trained to do that. So this is a trained social worker that'll come out to the home, meet with the family. So to reduce, to reduce our calls and to get that person back and productive and get them off the addiction from what was caused by these companies. Once we get this program up and running, right now, I think 85% of this money, the $600 million, I believe, like you said, is being held by OPM. OPM is administering it. So I believe once we get something that is evidence-based, that's working, there's a group of people at the Capitol that are meeting, that are going to announce, then we'll open up the coffers on it and fund the program even more. So right now, we are going to use the funds that we are getting. Now, I believe we might have about $70,000?
$78,000, $78,066.09.
Yeah, so far. And that's been over the two years that we've been planning to push this. So all the chiefs are on board with it. Now, it's just in logistics of getting it up and running. This is the first step. I believe it's going to be something good. We don't have the capacity now as the Grandy Police Department to do anything like this. We do have a need. It's a good thing. Our community has less of a need. I think us in Canton are probably...
Canton, Farmington.
Canton, Farmington as well.
Avon.
But, well, all I'm saying with the need is, there's some, some communities have a higher need than we do.
Oh, I see.
But we do have a need. And it'll be help, especially on both sides. What I like about the program, it helps out the families, not only because the families really need help, and they're struggling with the individual and their family that's having the addiction. And it's really, we don't want it to be a police issue, because things that are done, it's an after effect. And we'd rather go about it this way. Just has a better outcome.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to, I had a couple of questions, but in my previous life with the Attorney General's office, I was actually involved in these discussions that led to the negotiated settlements. So it's really gratifying to see that the money's being put to good use. And these are exactly the types of programs that the settlement agreements anticipated. So I think it's a great thing. I'm wondering if there's another mechanism by which people can access these services without law enforcement involvement. So for example, if there's a family that needs these services, is there a gateway for them to get them without law enforcement involvement?
See, we could probably both answer that. Yes and no. So on an emergency level, you want us there, because we're usually there not to find the drugs. We're there just to get the person Narcan, get the person medical attention, get them off to the hospital. We're really not there in a law enforcement function. But when they're experiencing crisis, yeah, there's CHR, there's Sandy and her people. So there are other things out there. But a lot of times, it's, it's right after when, when, you know, the families are in crisis, the person's in crisis, they're experiencing this, this event, we go in there just to make sure, just, just to save their life, basically, and stabilize it. But then we leave. And but because we're that front, that's a perfect opportunity to, now, we would make the phone call and get, we would call directly. Our officers would all have in their cell phone the number, whoever the crisis worker is, hey, I'm at this house. This is what just happened. Families in crisis, they'd like you to come out now, or at least to the hospital. Because the hospital, too, right, what they're doing is, they're going to just take care of the immediate medical needs of that person. So it's something that really needs long-term addiction care, that this person will be that hub. And if it works the way it's planned and the way we've seen it working in these other communities, it works that way. And if we can keep one person alive, it was worth it.
Yeah.
That's, I kind of thought that. That was one of the primary benefits, is it's exactly that bridge. So the family may not know prior to the emergency how to access those resources. They will once they make this connection, right? Isn't that part of their role?
That's right.
Yeah. And some people might already have like a case manager to them. They might already have through CHR.
Right.
And through other avenues. But this person will still come in and bridge that gap, as Mark said. So it'll almost be like...
It's that connection to family, too. Because this addiction, it doesn't just affect the individual, it affects all those people around them. So the other reason to do this regional approach is because you might live here in Granby, but you might work in Farmington. Or we're all kind of connected. So even if it's a neighboring person, but they might be working in our town and vice versa. So it really helps with that as well.
Anybody else?
One more question. Will we be getting periodic reports about the effectiveness of the program and whether...
Yeah, so one of the components of this program is, there's a database. It's called Core Data.
Yep.
And it's where the police officers or responding officers are going to enter in that information. It goes right into a database. And those numbers and all of those statistics are going to be able to be pulled and reported out.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, that's the newness of this, like, that the state, and it's partly so, they're not going to put money at something that's not going to work. So they're like, they want to get us just enough to get up and running to see if it's evidence-based and it is working. We're going to take that data, have these meetings. Me and Sandy will be in communication with the other chiefs and social services in those towns and to discuss.
Great. Thank you.
So if there's nobody else, I want to special thank you and kudos first to the three of you. This, this sounds kind of counterintuitive, but sometimes when, to make these things that are very valuable work, you have to collaborate with other towns. It's actually a lot more work than just doing it yourself. And so I know you guys worked really hard to give us an opportunity to participate in this program. And I, I think it has real potential to help actually solve problems instead of just constantly responding to problems. And second, a special kudos to Sandy, because chief, before either you or Mike was here, she was the cooler head that prevailed. Because when I was sitting in the chair and we're getting reports that we were receiving the money, at least every 30 days, I go, what are you going to do with the money? What are you going to do with the money?
Working on it.
We're going to put it to very good use. So thank you for being the cooler head.
Sandy's very convincing. That's okay.
If I could, Mark.
Sure.
One of the things I noticed in this contract, it's a 20-year contract. Is this something like the Farmington Valley, where it's normally a year-to-year rather than 20-year contract?
I didn't notice the 20 years, but what I've read that was important to me is, we can get out in 30 days' notice.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And second question, would this be a regular budget line item, like our other health services, or is this a separate?
The intent is to use strictly the opioid settlement funds. So the money that we have collected from the opioid settlement funds is what will fund the program. We're not looking to take additional dollars at this point.
Right, correct. You do not see this money coming in as a revenue source of the general fund. You see it as a special revenue fund with a special purpose. We are matching the special purpose with the special revenue. We will, in all likelihood, report it in a particular page in the budget to show the inflow and the outflow, but it is not related to the general fund. Thank you.
Yeah, they're very specific on what you could spend it for. Only me, a lot of the people were like, can I buy cars with this? Can I do this? It's very specific.
Yeah.
One last comment. The Sandy has done a remarkable job in a few different places at the Farmington Valley Cooperative to say, hey, let's get rolling. The chief and I even went almost door to door. We, we put out a communication.
That's true.
And we encouraged the other towns. I believe Farmington is on the cusp of moving forward with their council. And perhaps one other town?
Avon.
Avon. So we are the first out of the gate. And when the chief and Sandy say this is potentially life trajectory changing, they mean it. And those other towns will only bolster our ability to have a contract with McCall. And we expect some of the other towns, like a Sims Berry, who said, we're really interested in it. We're just up to our ears in other things. I think once they see it works, you'll also have some of those other Farmington Valley towns jumping on. But we are, we are first out of the gate.
Yeah, Sandy definitely leads the way and kind of guides the ship, so.
Rocky Road.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to say, I think it's a great program. I'm excited to see the results of it. Question on the town's contribution, is it, do they do it based on per capita? Or how do they?
Yes, it will be per capita.
That makes sense. Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. There is a proposed motion, but I think there are a couple typographical errors in the resolution. If everybody's okay with it, I'll just give them the mic. If you want me to read the remaining. All right. If we're okay with me just giving them the mic, then I would accept the motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the attached memorandum of understanding with McCall Behavioral Health Network, the attached program resolution, including any related documents, and we further approve the use of the opioid settlement funds not to exceed $28,000 in any fiscal year in order to establish the regional CLEAR program in the town of Granby.
Second.
Any other additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you again. Great work. I'm here by hand and mic while I do suggest revisions.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Finance Department Job Description Approval. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, Kimmy is on the line in case she has any questions. Last month, we sent you five job descriptions. This was an orphan that was left behind on my desk. We did not intend to orphan it. It is the senior accountant within the Finance Department. It is simply amending the job description to bring it up to current standards, and it will be filed away. This particular position is filled with an incumbent. And if Kimmy has any other questions or wants to provide any comment, she is on the line.
I'm here for questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
I would accept the proposed motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the attached job description of the senior accountant for the Finance Department as presented in the December 31, 2024 memo from the town manager.
Second.
We'll give the second to Kelly. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Kimmy and Mike and Krista, thank you again. This is that task of taking on our, all of our job descriptions and bringing them up to date as a daunting one, and you guys have done a great job at it. So thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the plus-one budget narrative. We took this up at our last meeting before the holiday break. This is the time for any questions. Our action tonight will be to direct Mike to either send this forward to the three board meeting or send some revised version to the three board meeting. Let's, let's just go one at a time. Fred, do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, it looked pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Nope, good starting point. Looking forward to the detailed conversations.
I would say the same thing. I think you guys have done a tremendous job of getting us to where this, we are in this process with this plus-one. I'm very comfortable with where we're at, especially given that it addresses a key need in our community in terms of an additional law enforcement officer. So I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, I appreciate the format. It's very easy to understand and very straightforward. Thank you.
I like the additional information they put in backing up. I like the additional information they put in backing up the the numbers. And I'm wondering if I could have a question on the proposed mill rate for next year. Where did we assume that come from? Wouldn't that just be another TBD is what I guess I'm trying to say.
Yes, you're absolutely correct. The current mill rate is 33.13, and we do not know what the 26 mill rate will be until we get the grand list, although I am mildly optimistic that you're going to start to see the grand list grow predominantly to Station 280 and in other things that have happened out there. So on the revenue side, it's wait to be determined. Sue Altieri is working on the grand list. I spoke to her a couple of days ago. She does not anticipate that she needs a 30-day extension, so it will be available to us around February 1st. With respect to those who are watching out there, simply put, we eliminated two positions through basically attrition. We took those two positions and converted it to one police officer. That in a nutshell is what's happening here. If you recall, some of the reorganizations, Sandy Oss took on Parks and Recreation responsibilities, and there were five new supervisors promoted in Park Public Works. We will be coming to you in the next meeting or two for a fifth job description in Public Works that we haven't yet approved. That's the facilities position. Rich was promoted to that particular position, and that was only in the last week. We'll have him at a future meeting and introduce him to you, much like we did Chris and Stuart and Robbie and Kevin. I expect him to be at the meeting, but those are changes that we made that we are divesting our power, so to speak. We're looking at redundancy. We're looking at what happens down the road in terms of sustainability in the next generation of managers. All of this contemplates that. We have some work to do on medical benefits. Retirement benefits are pretty solid in terms of what we have. And then we know we're experiencing pressure from inflation and so forth. There is a few items out that we'll continue to work on. That is, can we, can Kimmy and I make recommendations as to how to program other funds so that they can support some of the operations of the general fund in a small way? Do we have enough custodians? Is there an opportunity to have a discussion on a public works labor? And then long term, Granby Ambulance Association is something that we have to discuss as part of the workshops.
Mark, was your question based on the 3313 on the first? Yeah, I had the same question until I figured out that that's the current mill rate for this year. It's this fiscal year.
Yeah, but my short, apologies for that. When we talk about the upcoming budget, that's fiscal year '26, and that's July 1, 2025 to June 30, '26. The the dates obviously get confusing, and I've been at it for quite a while, and they still confuse me. The October 1, 2024 grand list will feed your fiscal '26 year budget. So again, other than those types of things, it's pretty straightforward. And then we will wait for the Board of Finance to see what their direction is on revenues, mill rate, collection rate, and so forth.
Anybody else? I do want to reiterate for the public who's either watching now or who will watch later, please don't interpret our lack of questions as a lack of detailed information. If you're, if this is something that you follow and are interested in, just read this memo because it's is a different, as you heard, some of the members of the Board of Selectmen say, it's a different format with a lot of very good information about what we're doing and why and what we didn't do and why. And so it's a good starting point for those of you that want to follow along closely in the budget process.
I I will also make a couple of comments that that dovetail into your comments, Mark. What the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance will see as we move into the budget workshops is you will be receiving basically three things. You will be receiving the traditional budget book. It should be easier to read and a little bit more elusive. It will elucidate things a little bit in greater detail. That's number one. That will be available to the general public. It'll be available to the employees, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen. That's item number one. An item that will be available to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance will be a workbook. We will actually basically show you the calculations that we are making, whether it's on revenue, whether it's the grand list, whether it's on non-taxable property. From revenue to expenses, we will disclose, I think, more than we have historically. So the workbook is a companion document to the budget book. And then finally, each department will have a very brief PowerPoint. I'd like to tell you five pages, some will be a little bit longer. It will introduce you, number one, to the department. Number two, to the either charter, statutory, or ordinance-related duties that each department has. Police Department has certain statutory duties. The town clerk has other statutory duties, so they'll be articulated. There will be an organization chart for each of the organizations, so you can basically see what people we have and what places. That will correspond to their salaries in the budget books, so there'll be, again, more transparency. And then as you work through the book, there's a couple of forms that we call Form One and Form Two. One are the, as I mentioned, the statutory ordinance or other related duties. And then Form Two is what they accomplished in the current year with the money that was given to them. They'll talk about their current budget, whether or not they need an increase, whether or not, what's going up, what's going down. Finally, they'll talk about their capital needs briefly, and then they'll be in a situation where they can take any questions. Both the budget book and the PowerPoints will be posted on the website in advance of the workshops. We'll go through that data. So I think everyone, whether you're a resident who's watching, whether you're a Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, whether you're an employee, it brings it all together, and there should be a greater understanding of where the taxpayer dollars go, how we use it, and why we use it in a particular way. So just kind of a a primer for what we're going to face the first week of March.
All right, any other questions on the plus one? Before I take the proposed motion, because it includes both approval of the plus one and the setting of the three board meeting, just again, highlight that we're talking about scheduling the three board meeting for Tuesday, January 21 at 7:00 PM. I'll talk about this a little bit later. I think we will schedule ourselves in here from at maybe 6:30 prior, just because we'll need to do the appointments and they'll give us a little bit if we have to other business. So again, everybody's familiar with the three board process. It kind of kicks it off for us. The boards get to ask each other questions about the budgets, and we'll go from there. So any questions about the date or the timing of the three board meeting? All right, if not, I would accept the proposed motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve, as presented, the town plus one budget narrative as detailed in the November 30, 2024 memo from the town manager, Mike Walsh, and to further set a three board meeting, including the Board of Selectmen, Board of Education, and the Board of Finance for January 21, 25 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on our agenda is related to CPAC. I'll start here, Mike, if you're okay. Two things, I'm going to take these actually in reverse order. I'm going to do E2 first and then I'll go to E1. So we had our first CPAC meeting on December 12. I'm sorry, December 2. And I just want to repeat an apology here that I've made in other settings since then. I personally did not do a very good job of sort of setting the foundation there. It's been a long time since CPAC has met. We have some new members in terms of what we did to lead up to that and and what the expectations were, what we needed to kind of get through. And so we, my words, CPAC struggled to navigate a little bit, all the way ranging from, I didn't give Mike the heads up that we should have, you know, organized the room differently. So, you know, some people are sitting up here and some people down there. So since then, I've spent some time meeting with Mike and Mike Carco, the chairman of the Board of Finance, and Kevin Hobson, who is the chairman of the CPAC, and with the superintendent and Monica, the chair of Board of Ed, just to kind of, kind of reset. And so we're all on the same page going forward. I also want to, to the, anybody who watched that later and got any impression that that there was a questioning of our, the way we did this in the past and the transparency related to it, and to the extent that I in any way led or contributed to that, that isn't the case, and it's not what we meant to say, right? You guys remember, because we had a lot of discussions about, it wasn't about transparency or lack of transparency, but it was about trying to do the capital planning a little bit differently so both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen capital plans were all in one place and that they were a little bit further outreach, just try to make them easier to understand. So where we have ended up is, and it's in a very good spot, as we always do, we've talked about suspending CPAC until probably the first meeting in May. So we had set that CPAC to meet twice a month, as long as they needed to, the first and fourth Mondays of the month. We've already canceled them for this month in January. And the reason is, the consensus was, what we presented CPAC was one giant list of capital programs that are capital planning projects that weren't prioritized in any way or necessarily sorted. And so the consensus was, that's not a good use of CPAC's time to prioritize and sort those lists. So they're going back to the boards. So we'll take our list in the budget process, utilizing the budget process as we always have, but our list in particular, we know, needs some cleanup because there's stuff we've already funded because we've managed to find, use COVID dollars for, for stuff that needs to come off there for different reasons. So we've committed to see the chairman of CPAC and all those others I just mentioned. What we would do is use the budget process to clean up the list, if you will, to really do three things, take anything out of there that we no longer need to be considered, sort them between small and large cap projects ourselves, what we think we can handle with our annual capital funding, and then what falls into the larger cap that we have to consider different funding sources. And then to prioritize them ourselves. So if we think it's important that it be done in this year, we tell them that instead of, and then that's traditionally more what we've done with CPAC. So so unless there's an objection to that, I think that's how we're going to proceed with CPAC. And then the other item is, really, you guys will remember when we, just recently, when we reset the charge for CPAC and the membership, we really only made one significant change to the way it had been done in the past related to the membership, and that was the treasurer, who has always been a member, has always been a voting member. We made an ex-official member and and gave the treasurer voting rights only if there was necessary in event of tie. And I take responsibility for that. It was just a mistake. But there's, the treasurer in particular, John Adams, has brings a lot of experience to this process, many decades, actually, of having gone through the process. And it did not occur to me when we voted on that, it really is unfair to ask him to be there and dedicate all of his time as a citizen, who's not elected official anymore, to be prepared to step in when we needed to and and not give him a vote. So I am going to ask the Board tonight to just amend that, to make it the way we always have, so there'll be seven voting members and the same, nothing else would change. So Mike, do you have anything additionally to add?
No, you you explained it very well. The process CPAC was new to me as well. I've got a really much clearer understanding of of how to move forward. We'll be taking the superintendent's recommendations on the board side. We'll be taking my recommendations on the town side. We'll be combining that into one list. We're using 250,000 as the threshold. If it's 250,000 or more, that's large cap. If it's under 250,000, that's small cap. So we're keeping some of the same naming conventions so that we can kind of pull the process together. And we'll be able to have some clarity through the budget processes to what the priorities are. And then we will be able to give CPAC a much more polished, near-final document to have them make their recommendations on. So I think it's, I think it turned out well in the end, and I'm appreciative of being able to watch the process unfold to understand what the community needs.
Peggy and Mark, you were both there. You want to add anything or?
No, I think you did an admirable job of explaining things.
All right, Mark?
No, you did a good job of explaining, and I like the amendment we're making to the CPAC charter or charge.
Would you be willing to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I would. I move the Board of Selectmen approve that the town treasurer be appointed to CPAC as a full voting member with all rights and privileges as all other full voting members.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is cemetery rights transfer requisement request. You guys will remember, we discussed this briefly about a month or so ago when we referred it to our planning commission for an opinion. So you want to take it from here, Mike?
Sure. If you recall, several months ago, we were approached by the town of Suffield, and on the line is Bill Hawkins from the town of Suffield. He is the Director of Planning and Development. If he, if anybody on the board has any questions, Bill would be the guy. Essentially, we were approached by Suffield, who said, hey, listen, we've got this ancient cemetery, .65 acres, dates back to 1788. Would the town of Granby be willing to relinquish its rights? And we talked to Rich Roberts, our Corporation Council. Other than getting the 824 hearing, which came back, as Abby Kenyon mentioned, fine, we can move forward. There's a proposed motion, and I'll turn it over to you, back to you, Mr. Chairman, in case there's any questions that we can direct to Mr. Hawkins.
Yeah, I appreciate that. As a lawyer, I would just say the language in the deed perplexed me to begin with, so I don't, if we take the action that's recommended to us tonight, I don't think we're foregoing any significant rights. I had a question I didn't think to ask the first time, so I'll start. There's, there's no additional capacity in the cemetery, right? So the the plots are all full, it's just a matter of who's maintaining existing plots?
I'll refer to Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thanks. Yeah, to put it record, Bill Hawkins, Director of Planning and Development here in Suffield. That's a great question. In fact, I looked at that earlier today, there really isn't any capacity left in that .65 acre parcel. There's very little open space. So I think that's why this mountain burying ground association purchased the acre and a half next door. So really, that's, as you point out, it comes down to maintenance, and this group has been maintaining that town parcel. And so for insurance purposes and other reasons, they've asked the town of Suffield to transfer the property to them. That's when we found this very old deed with a challenge that found perplexing, and here we are tonight. So I can answer any questions now.
Yeah, I appreciate that. For me, that provides a great deal of clarity, right? So whatever rights the donor meant to give us a couple hundred years ago, they don't exist anymore because the cemetery is filled anyway. So anybody else have any other questions?
Nope.
If not, I would accept the proposed motion.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen relinquish its rights slash transfer its interests in the cemetery on Phelps Road in Suffield, located between 3453 and 3493 Phelps Road, which was deeded to Suffield by Elijah Phelps in 1788 for the purposes of providing burial plots to inhabitants of Suffield and North Granby, and to further authorize the town manager to execute any documents necessary to fully effectuate this transaction.
Second.
No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the neglected cemetery account grant program authorization. Pretty straightforward. We got the money, we spent the money, we need to authorize, Mike, to sign off on the documents. That's as brief as I'm going to get, people.
If there's no further comments, I'll make a motion. The Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes the town manager, Michael P. Walsh, to enter into. into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, documents necessary for the 2023 neglected cemetery account grant program.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on our agenda is Park and Recreation Study Appropriation Request. Mike, why don't you take it away?
Sure. Back in the fall, we became aware that we had a noise issue emitting from the pickleball courts at Salmon Brook Park. If you recall, those were retrofitted tennis courts. However, we have a bigger issue at both Salmon Brook and Aaron's Parks, and that is, what is our capacity there, what's our long-term plan, where should we invest money, where should we not invest money? So we decided, in terms of working with Anthony McGovern, who's the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Board, back in September, they had asked that we move forward and contemplate a study. We used ARPA funds, this was a late project, we did manage to have two submissions. The winning submission was a company called GZA, just over the line in Massachusetts. They are park and recreation architects, and they will, in essence, do a master plan. There's three scopes within the project, or three pieces of the scope of the project. Beyond a kickoff meeting, there will be kind of a community charrette, where the community will be asked, what things do you want to see at the park, what things don't you want to see? We'll be reaching out to all the organizations who currently play there, to understand, are there enough of this field, are there too much of that field, and so forth? So in essence, we are setting out a planning document, using Park and Rec Board input and community input, to chart a path course, a path forward, so that when we do choose, the Board of Selectmen chooses to invest in that park, Board of Finance and the Park and Recreation Board, it's with community input and with a preordained plan, in terms of what are the priorities of those two parks. So this study originally came in at 44,500, I believe. We asked them to cut 5,000 off, they did. We originally contemplated 25,000 as ARPA funds, and because we fully utilized all ARPA funds, as we were required to by December 31st, I'm requesting that the excess over the original 25, or 14,500, come from the Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund, marrying to the original ARPA appropriation, and you currently have a balance, as of June 30th, 2024, of 560,297. So this is a small number to get what I conceive to be a valuable report with community input.
Any questions?
Just one. I know we did a survey, Park and Recs did a survey of town, you know, town, to see what they wanted in the park, not too long ago, like, a couple of years ago?
Correct.
Is that going to get considered, or will the survey be different? Or how do we, how would we think about that?
It will absolutely be considered. Anthony and I are having a discussion right now, and the discussion is, will the Parks and Recreation Board run with GZA and include the town, or will the town run and include the Parks and Rec Board? He has a meeting tomorrow, he'll ask that question, get it squared away. In either case, whoever is running with this, we will not only include the original survey, we will update it as part of the community charrette. So yes, it will be included in whatever master plan comes out of this.
Okay.
Yep.
Right.
I had the same question before Sandy was, took over that department. I know it was a couple of years ago, I don't know whether the questions...
I didn't know if I was going to.
Yeah, so it may not be of any use at all, but we definitely will. I mean, I think we did it internally, honestly, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, if not, I'll accept the proposed motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a $14,500 appropriation from the Park and Recreation Special Revenue Fund to provide funding for the GZA Geo-Environmental, Inc. Recreation Facility Analysis, and forward this request to the Board of Finance to approve.
Second to motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. All right, the next item on our agenda is Radio Communications System Agreement Approval. We've discussed this at some level multiple times at past meetings. When you came in at your seat, there was a revised memo, it's, it's not any different than what was posted online, we just didn't get the second page of the memo, and your backup includes, I think, the entire agreement in the exhibits. I'm going to turn it over to Mike in a second, but I, just by way of, again, introduction and thank you. So this agreement has been vetted by a pretty, pretty intense process. Chris is here from the Ambulance Association, he's part of our committee, along with Kirk and Chief Sansone and Chief Orr. I want to thank the committee, Mike and myself sit on it. A lot of work has gone into taking this concept to a RFP, and then the RFP to a actual agreement. This is a very technical, very extensive project that we're, we're contemplating. So there's a lot of work, a lot of good people who are volunteering their time, especially Chief Orr, who does most of the laboring work to get the committee ready for our meetings and so forth. So I personally thought I was going to read every page of that document, and all of the exhibits and stuff. I didn't, I read, I skimmed it, and I'm comfortable with that because, and I want the Board and the public to know, so the, the committee has reviewed it, the committee recommends it, it was approved or reviewed by our attorney, and it was reviewed by Federal Engineering, who helped provide some input on a lot of the details and the terms. Remember, Federal is the company that we hired to help us evaluate the agreement and the bits. So I'm comfortable, we're in a good spot. If you read it carefully, you will notice that if we approve this agreement, we're starting out over budget. It's higher, I hate to use the word budget, but it's, it's higher than the estimate we The intent is to, if we approve it, or approving the outside number, in the worst-case scenario, the committee has already identified a number of things that we may not need to spend in this, that this agreement calls for. They follow generally, I'll let you guys speak if you want, if I get this wrong, into my own head, anyway, three categories, things that we just won't need, because once they get in, like, looking at the current tower, we put, built in some improvements that may not actually be necessary. Some equipment that we may not absolutely need, would be the second category, but might be warranted and beneficial. And then the third category is things that we're probably going to need, but don't need at the beginning, and we could, we could pull off. So there's, there's going to be opportunities to work within this agreement, but part of the reason it took us a couple of extra meeting cycles to get it to you is to make sure, as we sit here today, it has everything that we've contemplated in it, and, and we know we have, we have work to do. So. Have you said that, Mike?
So a shout-out to Chief Orr, who is on the line, and I will set it up, and then turn any questions that you may have over to him. So we are approaching seven years that this committee has been functioning, endeavoring to purchase a basically first responder radio emergency communication system, and all that which it entails, whether it be a dispatch station, or whether that be a tower to handle the traffic. Simply put, our existing capabilities are limited by obsolescence, are limited by not a very good coverage map. And again, the only constant over the last seven years was Chief Orr. There were several Town Managers that were involved in the process, there were at least two police chiefs, Kirk was around, Granby Ambulance was around, CERT, and so forth. But it was Chief Orr who brought this thing forward. It started in February 28, when the needs assessment was done. In May of '21, there was a request for quotations. This assessment lasted two years into early 2023. Then in May of '23, a request proposal was issued to replace the entire system, and the technical proposal specification work took the town from '21 to '23, over two years. Meanwhile, Federal Engineering was in place, they assisted us as we needed them. And then you recall, last April, we had the referendum question, which the voters approved. We are now April of 2024, the funding is in place, and then contract negotiations began. Again, those were spearheaded by Chief Orr. The contract was reviewed by Howren and Sage Attorney, Joseph Fortner, and in order for us to move forward, we're asking you for two things tonight. One is to allow the town, through me, to sign a $3,977,306.22 contract, which represents worst possible case. There could be some value engineering that reduces it. And then also, secondarily, move that the Board of Selectmen extend the January 30th, 2024 consulting agreement that we have with Federal, in an amount not to exceed 50,000, to bring them in where it makes sense and where it is necessary, if we need them, to provide the expertise that perhaps the town does not have. Certainly, I won't speak for Chief Orr, because he possesses that expertise, but to get the contract and move forward. Now, one last thing to recall, is we were on our own with this until June of 2024. That's when, through the good work of our legislative delegation, and a number of folks who've had contacts within the state government, we were granted by Governor Lamont $2 million to offset this cost. So when we had this approved in April, we thought our cost would be 4.6, we now think it'll be close to the 2.6, so we have to look at any cost overruns in the, in the perspective of, will this be better with these cost overruns as we move forward or not? And with that, I'll defer to any questions, and turn it over to Chief Orr.
Well, before we go to questions, Chief Orr, anything you want to add?
Good evening, John Orr, Chief of Last Acres Fire, resident of town. No, I appreciate the accolades, appreciate all the help from everybody and from the town. This has been a long project for all of us, but it's, it's the right thing to do, and I appreciate all the support. I believe we've got a good contract here that will get us into the, right where we need to be. Marcus Communications has been partnered with us right from the beginning, and they continue to be a good supplier of services, and we think going forward, they'll be, they're the right choice, that's why they were selected. So I'll answer any questions anyone has on the contract.
Mark, any questions?
No questions for John Orr, one on the $50,000 here. Would we have to go through the Board of Finance for that additional expenditure?
I'll defer to Kimmy, if she's still on the line, she is? I don't think so.
I think I can help with that, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
The answer is no, because we included the extra funding was part of the 4.6 million, so it's already approved.
Thank you, Chief.
Anything else, Mark?
Yep.
Peggy?
Nothing. Nothing.
Nope, definitely a system that needs upgrading, so it's been a long time, but good job.
Okay, I, I forgot, because I didn't have page two, that we were going to take action on the Federal Engineering. I'm okay, as long as you're okay, Mike.
I am.
That the original contract gives you the flexibility to use them as we need them to help us manage this project.
Yes.
We don't need a, we don't need a replacement on a second contract.
No.
Okay, all right. If there are no other questions, I would accept, I guess there are two motions, let's do them one at a time. They're on the page two of the memo that was on the desk in this guy here.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the communications system agreement between the Town of Granby and Marcus Communications LLC in the amount of $3,977,306.22, and direct the Town Manager to execute all documents necessary to facilitate the agreement.
Second to motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Peggy, you want to do the second motion?
Sure. I'll move that the Board of Selectmen direct the Town Manager to extend the January 30th, 2024 consulting agreement with Federal Engineering, at the same terms and conditions of the original agreement, with a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000, in order to continue to rely on their technical expertise and experience, as the town begins the process to replace the townwide emergency communication system with an anticipated completion date of May 2026.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next item on our agenda is the Town Managers' Departmental Reports, as of December 31st, 2024.
Thank you, I just want to highlight a few things for those residents who may be watching. Out of the Town Managers' Office, as I mentioned, we finalized the work on the American Rescue Plan Act projects, in order to properly obligate the funds by December 31st, 2024. And at the next meeting, when we talk about the projects, we'll have the ARPA summaries. Basically, the 1.6 million has been fully obligated, which was the Phase Two group of projects. I attended the tree lighting event in the Holiday Market at Holcomb Farms on 12/7. Both of those were remarkable. Shout-out to CND, to Mary Jo, to, to Mark, for both the tree lighting and the Holiday Market. I attended the first, I call it the church meeting, Jenny Emery is working on a business analysis of possibilities of 87 Sims Berry Road. If anybody would like to tour it, I have keys, we can, we can do that if you so choose. Out of Finance Tax and Assessor's Office, focusing a little bit more on assessors this month, the veterans exemption, 100% permanently, and totally disabled and service-connected veterans can have considerable, if not their entire amount of tax wiped out. So Sue Altieri is looking at that very closely, she's working with outside counsel. When properties are held in a trust, we want to know if that exemption needs to be applied. So some clarity on the original contemplation of the statute. She's also reviewing, adjusting, and valuing motor vehicles for the supplemental grant list, and those bills probably are in everybody's hands compared to when this was written. Moving over to Abby's Department, Community Development. Building Official and the Fire Marshal have been busy inspecting Building 7 at Station 280, and they anticipate a CO will be issued soon. John Lambert for Information Technology, extremely busy with American Rescue Plan Act technology replacements, whether that was in this meeting room, whether that's in the senior center, whether that's at Holcomb Farms, whether that's at the animal shelter or the police station, there was a considerable amount of work done. There was also work done at the Town Clerk's Vault Camera, and then a security camera at Salmon Brook Park was updated. With respect to the Police Department, officers attended the American Legion Breakfast and Food Drive at Geisler's over the holiday season. Small World Daycare visited the PD for the holidays, and they sang songs to the officer, officers. If you don't have "keep" in your vocabulary, you just need to see what they did on that particular day. Chief Sansom and Captain Laflamme attended the local traffic authority certified training, and also Captain Laflamme assisted in the school's safe assessment, directly with Homeland Security. I won't go into the crime that the chief listed in his report, but it is in my report. There was some vehicles stopped, there was a violation of probation arrest, there was a fellow that was extradited on a serious felony warrant from Ohio. We had, unfortunately, a cruiser rammed by a resident suffering from, from a crisis, and we had a car versus bicycle accident, minor injuries were reported, but there was evading there. And then finally, we had an unfortunate incident where a customer at a vape shop believed he was in a marijuana dispensary, and when they couldn't sell him marijuana, he basically assaulted the clerk. So this is in our little town of Granby, I appreciate the chief giving us a summary, and if anybody who wants to read it in more detail, it's, it's in the record. Moving on to Public Works, they continue with the no-snow-on-the-ground ditching and debris removal from drainage areas to make sure the spring flows move along well. There's some tree trimming done at various locations, and to date, we've had three minor snow events, we've had three since this was produced, so there's been a total of six so far this year. Each one, in terms of materials and labor... Each one, in terms of materials and labor, is anywhere from 16,000 a storm to about 32,000. Our biggest storm was about four inches and they're all based on timing. Do they happen when the men are in during the day, is it overtime, is it weekends, is it nights, is it holidays? But that gives you some idea. So if we have a four-inch storm that costs about 32,000, you could imagine what something more substantial would cost. Here's a statistic that was remarkable and, and I double-checked it to be sure it was right, and we believe it is. The library saw a record number of visitors to the main library in November. 9,195 people visited our libraries in the month of November. They also selected a capital campaign consultant to complete a feasibility study for a potential future capital campaign if we ever decide that the library building needs expansion. Moving on to, there's also underway a library carpet and painting removal installation project that as we speak is ongoing. Jumping over to CND O's Department, Human Services, which now includes youth, parks and rec, senior and social, the holiday marketplace had 40 vendors and was a success. Breakfast with Santa sold out, two seedings and a third seating was added in that sold out. Thirty events at Holcomb Farms are booked already, excuse me, in 2025. Sixteen of those thirty events are weddings and in October of 2026, it's fully booked for weddings on all Fridays and all Saturdays. I mentioned with the action tonight, the park study consultant was hired and we will be kicking that off on January 17th and it will last approximately four months before we have a report in hand. Finally, on the holiday note, holiday sponsorship programs assisted 17 families and they fulfilled 38 children's wishes with gifts. So that's some good work from Sandy and her crew. 107 families and seniors were provided with holiday food vouchers to purchase their holiday meals, no taxpayer dollars were involved. And they handled a dozen fuel assistance appointments and then followed up on many calls. With respect to Scott Nolan and the town clerk, I won't go into detail, I will just tell you, he is carefully watching and updating on a few new laws that became effective, including video at ballot boxes, changes to the absentee ballot application process, changes to the Connecticut online voter registration system and trade name certificates. And Scott is here tonight, if you have any direct questions, otherwise it's in the narrative. And that is all for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments?
Just one question, how do they count the people going into the library? Is there?
They're stacking the numbers.
Yeah, I, I believe they do have a counter, yes.
I have two quick things to just, first on the IT, sometimes I lose sight of and I don't want everybody else to lose sight of, all the work that our team and John and the IT team have done in particular, kind of saved our day about a year ago when we made the transition. But I was, it reminded me when I heard the report and saw it today and also when we had our staff holiday party, we had everyone around the room and had everybody say what they were really looking forward to. And all three, I think of the IT people said, to be done with these ARPA projects, right? Because, you know, that we really substantially increased their workload with these upgrades to our communication systems and they're doing a wonderful job.
Absolutely.
Would please pass that on. And then it just humored me when you were talking about the snow and, and, you know, the cost and, because before I came over, I was watching the forecast for Saturday, have you seen this? So NBC News forecast for Saturday, depending on the model, ranges from, this is close to a direct quote as I can remember, to up to 12 inches of snow with severe heavy winds to sunny and mild, no snow at all. Literally, that's the.
They've covered the whole.
That's the range. So I think, our poor people over in public works. Enough said. All right. I have a quick, couple of things to report out on in no particular order. The first is just an update on the siding council's proceedings related to the proposed battery project. Kudos again to our team, entire team, including Mike and Abby and our staff in-house and our experts who are mostly volunteers who have been helping, not just providing testimony, but participating in hearings and helping us prepare. The proceedings are for all practical purposes done, the hearings have been closed, the, our written briefs were due on Thursday, but I believe we were going to file our brief today.
Correct.
Kudos to our legal team and the people who reviewed it, we're proud of the brief. I think it's pretty straightforward to laying out our position on behalf of the town. We, we may get some indication of what the council is thinking because we are on their agenda for this Thursday. And as I understand it, they typically take a straw poll and ask, it's kind of weird to me, but, so they, if they follow their normal proceedings, we may get some, not a decision, but some indication on Thursday of what they're thinking. But we've done, I can't think of a single thing we could have done differently in terms of presenting the town's concerns to the councils. Keep our fingers crossed.
So do they just come back with like approved, denied or approved with modifications? Do they, do they stipulate modifications or?
They can, they can deny, as I understand it, they can deny, approve, approve with modifications and conditions. We discussed that generally on our side, we frankly couldn't think of any proposed conditions that we thought were willing to offer because the site's just a horrible site for what they want to do. But that particular site is poorly suited, so we'll see, we'll see where it ends up. Any questions on that? All right. Just a reminder, one week from today in this room at 6 o'clock, I hope you guys can attend. It's not a normal schedule for us, don't stress out if you can. But we're doing a special meeting with a joint meeting of us and our Commission on Aging to review the proposals we got to repurpose the old Kern School for senior housing. It's something I'd love to have you guys sit in on and any thoughts that you might have on it. So if you can, I'd love to have you, obviously make sure you guys are here. I think we have, we, there are three respondents that we're going to bring in, pretty open informal format in terms of hearing what their presentation is, what questions we have. We have submitted to the, each of the proponents, a list of questions to, to be ready to answer. And we're not bound by those, but, but it's a good starting point for, look for your packet, because there'll be a packet that goes out with the proposals and the questions that we've told them to be prepared for later this week. So that, that's coming. And then finally, unless I'm forgetting something, on our, the night of our, so we would normally meet on the 20th, two weeks from today, but we can't because that's a holiday. So we scheduled the three board meeting for Tuesday, the 21st at 7:00. I think we should schedule our regular meeting for 6:15 if you guys can make it. I don't know off the top of my head that we have any business other than to make the appointments we know we're ready to make, to make the reappointments at least for the boards. But if we, if we schedule it at 6:15 and, you know, we're done at 6:30, we can have time to get ready for the three board meetings. Everybody okay with 6:15 on Tuesday?
Yes.
You guys don't normally come to the three board meetings either, but you're welcome and I'd love to see there if you can make it. And I realize when we move a meeting from a Monday to Tuesday, it's especially not for you guys, so make it if you can. All right, that's all I had. We'll start down on this end. Mark?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Peggy?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
Oh, sorry. Brett?
Nothing.
All right, you guys are up. Who's first?
Okay, so our biggest thing that's happening at high school right now is we have our midterm starting next week on Tuesday. So today, the National Honor Society started their after-school review sessions, which we do online to help other students prepare for their exams. Tomorrow, boys and girls basketball are going to be playing against East Granby, the girls will be playing at home and the boys will be playing away. And a few later events, our Poetry at Loud school-wide competition is coming up on January 22nd and then our job shadowing day is February 3rd, but I'll talk about those more at the next meeting. Last week on Thursday, Drama Club officially started rehearsals for the spring musical Legally Blonde, so it is fully in the works. And tomorrow evening, the JA Entrepreneurial Academy orientation will be taking place where a bunch of students apply to participate in a 16-week immersive program where we all get to learn about different business and life skills.
Awesome. Any questions for Zainab?
All right, so I just wanted to add is since the last meeting, well, we had a wonderful long winter break, this was the longest winter break we could possibly have, so I think it was, I believe 13 days.
Kids are getting, and kids are getting soft these days.
Yeah, oh, we really are. Also, in, in the past, the NHS had a successful stocking drive, so they did collect many toys during December and they were able to distribute that. Also, just building on, off the sports, sports are in full swing, as I can attest to, I had a track meet all of Saturday, so we and track are all in full swing and both the girls and boys basketball teams are doing fantastic with a five and one and four and one record as of right now. So they're very entertaining to watch and I do recommend going to a game if you can.
Awesome. Questions for Ben? Thank you, Ben. All right, we'll move on to the public session, anybody in the room, Chris? Anybody on Zoom? Want to address this in the public session? All right, hearing no one, don't think we need an executive session, right?
No.
All right, I will accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you guys next Monday. Thank you.
Stay safe.